I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting of June 9th, 2016, to order. The record that all the planning commissioners are here. And at this point, I'd like for you to join me, with me, in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Are there any agenda changes this morning?
No.
Okay, and next we have our public comment period. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the Planning Commission on a land use item, that is not on our agenda today, this would be your opportunity. Okay, we are moving on to the consent agenda, which is the approval of minutes from May 26, Planning Commission meeting. Any revisions, corrections?
I have some suggested corrections to the Attachment A, which is the safety element.
Okay.
On page S15, Measure 2F, dam failure inundation zone. The very last phrase, "In the event of a dam failure," I thought we were taking out because it's not necessary. B, it could be read to somehow limit the reach of this. In other words, you have to review these projects whether or not there's a dam failure.
Right. That makes sense to me. You're all right with that?
Sure.
There's one more on the next page. Measure S-3B, caliber's code consistency with state fire safety standards. The second sentence, amend the code and design manual as may be necessary to conform to state law. And then there's a typo, including.
Right.
And I'm not sure the right word is "including." I think it should probably be "which may include" because when you simply say "including provisions," that could be taken to imply that this has already made the judgment that these provisions are necessary to conform to state law.
I'm good with that. You guys? Yeah, Peter? Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, is there a motion to approve that?
There is also, I just noticed that we start with 3B and it probably should be 3A. So we're going to renumber those. I'm going to renumber it as well.
Is there a motion to pass the minutes as amended?
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is our public hearing, 2015-048, Plan Development Permit and Request for Modification for Mark Twain Healthcare District. I'm going to turn it over to Darcy.
Good morning. Peter, thank you. Before you today is a request for a plan development permit and request for modification for the Mark Twain Healthcare District. The project has two phases associated with it in terms of the plan development. Phase one is for a 19,581 square foot medical clinic. The clinic will have women's services, imaging, physical therapy, exam rooms, et cetera. Phase two includes multiple pad sites, which are about 74,000 square feet. These include retail, restaurants, and a possible assisted living facility. The applicant has also requested a modification to the commercial road template for the internal roadway. The project is located on the southwest corner of State Route 26 and Vista Del Lago West in Valley Springs. It encompasses six different parcels. The acreage is 14.55 acres. General plan designation is a law content to community center. And the zoning is C2PD, PX, so general commercial uses allows a numerous amount of permitted and some conditionally permitted uses. The PD is the plan development, which requires us to take a look at architecture or site plan layout. And the PX is that parking overlay zone, which allows some off-site parking if it cannot be accommodated on the site. This is an aerial photograph of the project site, a little bit different than what it looks like right now. Some of the areas that are green are brown, and that's just due to weathering and time. But what we're looking at is pretty much in this area here. I thought it might be helpful to actually have an aerial with the property lines on there, so you can have just a better understanding of what we're looking at in terms of the location. So some existing site conditions, these were actually just taken yesterday, so this is the most current in terms of what the site looks like out there. A lot of weeds, dead grass. You can see that some of those existing site improvements that have been there for a while are starting to look weathered. And this is a look at the property from across the street, and you can just kind of get a better idea of topography up here. In the corner, up in this area is where the existing residential home sits. And then these are the surrounding properties. So this is directly right across the street, across Highway 26. And this is on the opposite corner, right next to them, a gas station site. And then this is kitty corner to them. Existing sidewalk that is located along Vista Del Lago West, this would be going north on Vista Del Lago West. And this would be coming from the intersection, so you can see there is some existing trees that were planted years ago, the block wall that's there, and that sidewalk which leads to the corner. So in terms of the site plan, I did mention it is phased construction. Total square footage at full buildout is around 93,581 square feet. There are six parcels. The existing residence set is on the site. There's a boundary line adjustment that is being processed. I'm not clear if it's actually been recorded as of today. But it will result in moving some boundary lines around on the commercial piece, and then this residence will end up with a 2.59 acre parcel. They will take access off an existing driveway that is on Highway 26 that they currently use as their access point. In terms of how it's been laid out, the buildings and parking have been situated back from the street. The applicant has taken into consideration the surrounding land uses, trying to make sure there's adequate buffers, meeting the setbacks, meeting all of the requirements in terms of height, and where they're placing the buildings themselves in conjunction to landscape buffers and conjunction to the roadway. So the first exhibit you see here is the overall site plan. This could potentially be what you would see at full buildout. So this area here would be phase one. This particular building, although shown there, would likely not be constructed as part of the phase one. It would be included in phase two. But all of these improvements would be included in that phase one, and I'll talk a little bit more about those on the next slide. So as you can see, we've got this access back here to that existing residence. That's the access they use right now. In terms of setbacks to these adjacent residential lots, which aren't constructed yet but ultimately could have a home on them, they basically, the closest building would be 60 feet, which is well over the minimum requirements. These buildings would have their back loading dock areas. Over in this area, we have an access off of Highway 26. This is an existing off of Vista Del Lago West. So the roadway kind of goes through here. You can access this way. You can come down here. You can go over there. We'll talk a little bit more later about the pedestrian access throughout the site and how that works. So overall, this is what you could ultimately see. In terms of the phasing, as I said, phase one includes the medical facility, which is on the corner of Highway 26 and Vista Del Lago West. They would provide parking, landscaping, and various site improvements for circulation and access. Phase two, which would be built over time, would also construct their landscaping and parking as needed for those phases, including any other additional site improvements. So in terms of phase one, what you will see on that site, you may see a rough grade of this pad here, but mostly this is going to be left open. You'll see where landscaping will be filled in when we get to the landscape plan. Building one, phase one, he's here. We can come in off of Vista Del Lago West. Folks can come in off of Highway 26. We have a lot of parking that's available in this area. We've got a nice little turnaround unloading and loading zone. We have access around the building, which has been redesigned a few times to make sure that we're accommodating for fire apparatus and meeting all of the with requirements that the fire department needs to get around this building. We will have trash enclosures. There'll be signage. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about building design. So the zoning code does not have specific requirements for what a building should look like. It's not within a community plan area, so we don't have a community plan and policies guiding us to tell us what it should look like. But there's just a performance standard that basically says we need to be compatible with the project location, the surrounding land uses, taking into consideration the natural environment. So what the applicant has done is they've taken a look at surrounding area. What do we see across the street? What do we see in the nearby area? And the buildings are very comparable to what you would currently see located across the way. They've used varying roof heights, pitches, archways, various building materials on the building to sort of break up and provide that contrast, so you don't have big blank expansive walls. They're using various colors on the medical facility, and we'll see those in the pictures coming up. In terms of phase two, we don't have elevations for all of those pads, but we have provided a condition that states they have to be designed very similar to that medical clinic. But if somebody comes in and they want to do something completely different, they want to do their corporate logo, they will have to go through a new PD permit process, which would come before the Planning Commission. So this is what phase one, the medical clinic, would look like. We have various, like I said, building materials that are used, glazing on the windows, various colors. They provide a lot of contrast in terms of the archways and the different types of architecture that's proposed to use on here. This is your north and west elevations. So you can see they've carried those architectural elements all around the building, and your east and south elevations. In terms of parking for this site, it's broken up into two different calculations, the first one being for the medical facility, which requires two spaces per treatment or doctor's exam room. The other one is for the remaining building pad sites based upon the potential square footage, and that's one for 200 square feet of gross floor area. So the clinic itself would need 56 spaces. The 74,000 square foot retail would need 370 spaces. I did make an error in the staff report, so I want to clarify that. I said 405, and I'm not quite sure how I got to that number, but this is the correct number. So the site overall is overparked by 68 spaces. So it's a good idea to overpark your facility in case you have different uses coming and going that may require additional parking. But it's not so overparked that all you're going to see out there is just a sea of parking. So phase one is going to construct 124 spaces, and that would be enough to accommodate the medical facility and the 7,000 square foot pad site that's located next to that. They will also have eight handicap stalls for the entire site. 24 are required, so at full buildout you will see 24. They're also providing two electric vehicle charging stations. In terms of landscaping, the PD requires at least a minimum equal to 10% of the gross land area has to be landscaped. Phase one alone will have 38% landscaping, so they are far exceeding that minimum requirement. They're focusing on drought tolerant shrubs and ground cover around those buildings and in the perimeter. You will see some trees and vines and other decorative features throughout the project site. They're also providing shade trees. This is not a requirement of the code, but it is one thing that staff did talk to them about, and the importance of having that shade to be provided for folks that are visiting their facilities. So it comes out to be about one tree for every 4.9 stalls. The site will be irrigated with a drip automatic system. Phase two, any landscaping for phase two will have to come through with a landscape plan prior to the planning department signing off on future building permits. So what you'll see right now is just the landscape plan for phase one, and you can see that they have provided heavy landscaping adjacent to the roadways, more than the minimum three-foot requirement that the code states right now, providing landscaping throughout here. This is a protected wetland area, so they are not disturbing that area at all. That's part of their mitigation. They can landscape around it, but they cannot disturb the area at all. And significant landscaping around the parking, these circles indicate where trees would be. So you can see they've provided some significant landscaping for phase one. We anticipate that developments in phase two will have the same type of landscaping in terms of the amount that's provided. And we can see that when we look at the overall landscape plan and where their proposed landscape buffers are. Lighting is always a concern when we're introducing new construction to areas where maybe there's not a whole lot of lighting sources, or where we can potentially have a whole lot of light introduced. So this development includes parking lot poles for lighting in the parking areas, as well as building mounted light fixtures. A photometric plan was submitted, and we reviewed that to ensure that the intensity of the light that could be projected from this construction isn't going to spill over onto adjacent properties. The most intense light occurs directly under parking lot light poles, which is pretty common, also around building entrances, which you want for safety and security. So overall, they've logically placed where their poles would be, where their building mounted lighting would be, to not only have safety for people that are walking through the parking lot, but to also meet the standards of the code. There is a condition of approval that does require a photometric plan for phase two that is standard. And we basically made a condition of approval that reiterates the performance standard that all exterior lighting has to be shielded and pointed downward. Photometric plan, they don't come across very well on an overscreen. You really need to look at the big plan. But it basically shows a lot of numbers. It shows where the light sources are and the intensity of the light under those particular sources. The next discussion item is circulation and access. We talked a little bit about it in the previous slides, but there is one driveway off of Vista Del Lago West and two off of Highway 26. Those will be right-in, right-out only driveways per traffic study and Caltrans recommendations. Caltrans will be doing a project that's called Vista Del Lago Intersection Improvement. It will signalize that intersection of State Route 26 and Vista Del Lago. I spoke with Caltrans a few months ago, and the anticipated construction and completion date is between April and July of next year. There is that internal roadway that connects both phases to get vehicles back and forth, so folks can travel throughout the site. There was a traffic impact study that was done, looked at intersections. It looked at those improvements that are going to come from the intersection that Caltrans is doing. And it determined that the intersection itself and the driveways would operate at an acceptable level. You will see on the site plan that there is a future drive-through that is shown. Although we don't have an actual submittal, I did take a look at it and review it against the standards in the code, which basically state your drive-through can't impede vehicles and pedestrian traffic. It needs to provide a suitable buffer between that drive-through lane and any roadways. So we took a look at that. It meets that standard. There's the large landscape buffer between the drive-through lane and the driveway, as well as the roadway. So from what we see on paper, it meets those standards, but if one were to come in at a later date on that pad site, we would definitely take another look at it. Utilities and equipment, public water and sewer will be provided by CCWD. All rooftop and ground mechanical equipment will be screened. However, any ground equipment that is for the use of emergency personnel such as fire, it will not be screened to an extent where it's going to impede their access to it. So it may be just some landscaping. The walker by might not see it, but it's going to still give them access when they need it. Two fire hydrants will be provided for phase one. There's a condition of approval that specifies exactly where those fire hydrants will be placed. Additional fire hydrants will be part of phase two, and those will be determined at the time development comes forward. Trash enclosures are provided for all building pads, and those will be enclosed. They will provide trash and recycling, which is a requirement. Request for modification. I'll start with the easy one first. There were two that we received. The first one was a modification to not provide sidewalks along State Route 26. We took a look at that. Staff from the beginning was concerned that we wouldn't have that pedestrian access. We were really pushing for that sidewalk. So ultimately, there will be a sidewalk, and I'll show you on the next exhibit where general area of that will be. So that request for modification is no longer under consideration because the applicant has agreed to provide a sidewalk in that area. The other request for modification is from the commercial road template standards, and the applicant's proposing to do a four-foot sidewalk on one side and a three-foot shoulder on the opposite side. They stated in their modification request that most people are going to come here via a vehicle, not necessarily traveling from maybe one commercial corner to the next, and therefore not needing to have sidewalks on both sides of that internal driveway. So Public Works took a look at it. Staff took a look at it, concurred that, you know, it does logically make sense to have it at least on one side. However, the minimum requirement is a four-and-a-half-foot sidewalk and a four-foot shoulder. So that is what the condition states in the resolution. So this is the pedestrian pathway exhibit. I'm going to kind of go over it with you a little bit here. You can see this is where that connectivity is throughout the site, throughout the buildings, taking folks traveling from maybe one to the next through a safer path, clearly marked and delineated so that drivers will be able to see what that path is for. It could take you all the way over to this area. When reviewing the locality of where a sidewalk should actually be along State Route 26, the reality is, is that people are probably not going to go this way. The homes that are all over in here, their access doesn't come onto 26. So you're not going to generally have those pedestrians there. So it didn't make sense to make something come all the way down and across here. What does make sense is to have something that comes either this way and this way, which ultimately will come down to some steps. They can get down to the bus stop that's down at this corner. So location in terms of, and maybe the applicant can speak a little bit more to it because they may have, since our last discussion on sidewalks, have a better understanding of where exactly they want to put their sidewalk. But we did discuss they could do a meandering walk within that landscape corridor that's there, and then ultimately bring people down to that corner. That's an option. So they were going to take a look at what grading would be required, what's the safest way to get folks down to that area, and do it where we can also provide that required minimum sidewalk and handicap accessibility. In terms of SEQA, we prepared an initial study, which resulted in a mitigated negative declaration, provide mitigation for biological and geology and soils. We circulated that for 30 days, and we received four comment letters. We received a comment letter from My Valley Springs. They were concerned about the potential for elimination of sidewalks along Highway 26. I have discussed with them. They appear to be happy. They could speak to that if they're here today. But we are providing some pedestrian access along Highway 26. We received a letter from Army Corps of Engineers. Basically, what it said was a lot of standard language, but stated they need to do a wetland delineation. You know, our preference is to avoid the wetlands. They've prepared that wetland delineation. They are avoiding the wetlands. So I did do a follow-up with them to make sure that they understood what the applicant was doing. Unfortunately, like a lot of agencies, we just did not hear from them. So in reviewing what the applicant is doing and what they were asking for, it's the same thing. So there wasn't a necessary, there wasn't a need to do anything additional on that end. Caltrans submitted a letter that basically reiterated what they'd said before. You have to obtain accroachment permit, and they provided support for sidewalks along 26. Center Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board submitted their standard letter, which we receive on all projects, that basically stated if you're commercial, you need to do this. If you're industrial, you need to do this. A lot of those conditions are covered in other conditions, and are standard best management practices. The applicant has to do them no matter what. And finally, staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission pass a motion that would adopt a mitigated negative declaration and approve the project. And there are findings in your resolution and conditions of approval. I can answer any questions you have, and the agent's applicant is also available.
Any questions to Darcy right now?
Yes. On page eight and page nine, figures six and seven, it shows some elevations in the right-hand corner of each one. My problem is I'm not sure I can read them with the fine print. What is the number for the top of the parapet?
35 feet.
35?
Mm-hmm. Maximum height, I'm sorry, I should have clarified that. Maximum height is 45 feet. They're proposing at the highest point is 35 feet.
All right, and that's why it was probably in the larger print.
I couldn't find it, but I thought it said 55.
Ah.
It's 35, that's great.
Was that it?
Yes.
All right, any other questions to Darcy for now? All right, then would the applicant or applicant's agent like to address the Planning Commission? Oh, come on. Draw straws.
Good morning. My name's Nate Morgan. I'm with Aspen Street Architects. I'm hired by the Healthcare District. We take no objection to the proposed conditions and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No.
All right. We may have some later.
Yep.
You might get, you know, called on again, or you can like finger someone else in your group there.
Not a problem.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience that'd like to comment on this proposal?
Good morning. Colleen Platt with myvalleysprings.com.
Good morning.
I just wanted to say that we've been waiting for development on this corner for many, many years. There's been plans since the 90s for development there. In fact, I was the landscape architect involved in designing the irrigation and the landscaping back in 1997 for the project. And they had great dreams, and it was going to be wonderful, and it just petered out after all these years. So we are very happy to see something moving forward on this corner, and we're very pleased with the good job that Aspen Street Architects has done on the buildings. Across the street at the Terrace Shopping Center, there's similar brown earth tone red brick colors on that shopping center, which they picked up across the street in the stucco. And their landscape plans and the drought tolerant landscaping is quite suitable for the area. There's not going to be any lawns required, so that's good for our water usage. And Darcy's been very helpful answering lots of questions that I've been asking her about the existing wall and the existing landscaping. And of course, being a plant lover, we hope that some of the landscape materials can remain if possible, but if that's if not possible, we understand the construction will designate what that is. Our concerns about the sidewalk seem to have been met. There's not a lot of pedestrian traffic there now because it's a very dangerous place to cross the road. The highway traffic is fast. There's a lot of traffic that comes out from Vista Del Lago. It's a bad situation right now for traffic, and luckily, Caltrans is moving forward to signalize that intersection. So when that is done and it So when that is done in approximately a year, it sounds like that'll be good for this project also, and I anticipate there will be pedestrian traffic to the site once, once that's a safe place to cross the road. There already are people that dart across the road at the risk of their lives, so I'm happy that they will be doing a sidewalk, at least partway along the project on Highway 26 to access the site. So I wanted to thank the applicant and the planning staff for doing a good job on this project, and we support it completely, so.
Thank you.
Marty Crane, Valley Springs. I have watched this project evolve since the first meeting, when we first started talking about it at their early morning meetings, and I got to tell you, it's been a joy watching it evolve. And everything that would come up, they addressed, and then addressed even more extensively. So one thing I wanted to say as well is that what Joyce, or Colleen just mentioned about the people darting at their own, risk of their own life, isn't every day, many times a day occurrence, and you really have to watch, and a lot of times, it's our kids. So regardless, it happens all the time, so we're very excited about this. I heard something just a little while ago, and I just wasn't sure if, if I understood it, or I know I didn't understand it. You said something about going around, meandering around to some steps. Where do the steps take them? And is, is, where does the bus, I think the bus is making, our transit is making plans to come in there, and I was wondering if you could kind of share that with all of us.
Okay. Well, sure, why don't you go ahead and someone address that, and then we'll...
Yeah, I'm Ezra Ivy with Aspen Street Architects, an architect there, if you look at the site plan.
Could you guys, I'm just going to remind you to sign in, because you talk so fast, I have no idea what your name is.
Sure, I'm Ezra Ivy.
This is for Annette. Thank you, Ezra.
So, the only steps in the whole project are right there at this retaining wall. And that's not the only access between these two buildings, or won't be. Around the whole site is wheelchair accessible with a 2% maximum cross slope. Of course, we have some steep grades in some places owing to the topography, but there won't be any impediments to wheelchair access anywhere.
When you go to the far right corner is where Darcy talked about steps going to the bus stop, and I think that's what Marty's referencing.
This existing AC pavement, the sidewalk, Caltrans is going to finish the corner when they do the light, and we'll tie in a sidewalk here that will, will have no steps along the whole path all the way around. And then the path from the sidewalk here over to the main entry will also have no steps. The only steps, as I mentioned, will be right at that one point because there's a retaining wall required for the topography there.
I'm trying to follow your dot.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Was there anyone else that wanted to address the commission on the project? No? All right, so I'll bring it back to the Planning Commission for discussion deliberation.
I have one question that may be in the literature somewhere, and I might have missed it, but there won't be any acute care in the area as far as any overnight patients that should be examined, or daytime only?
That's right. This is not a acute care, this is not a hospital. This is a clinic, typical business hours.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Well, is there a, anyone want to make a motion?
Well, I do have some questions about the resolution.
Okay. Probably a good time to go through those now.
I think so.
Okay.
Some of these are minor, but on page two, under Plan Development Findings, paragraph two, the evidence that starts development adjacent to the project site, et cetera. I think it's the fourth sentence that starts the corner opposite and across Highway 26. Should corner be plural?
I lost you. I did. I'm sorry, I was trying to find this button.
Okay.
Middle of the fourth line.
On page two?
Yeah, fourth line, page two, under paragraph two. The sentence begins the corner opposite and across Highway 26, include several commercial buildings. So it either should be corners, and I think that's probably what it means, or the word include should be singular. The sentence is, it reads...
So do both corners have commercial buildings?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So that would make sense. So the corner's opposite?
Okay, then there's a typo on the third line from the bottom of that paragraph. The elevation is well blend is with the existing character there, should be in.
Just grid of is?
And this is kind of a structural...
What paragraph do you refer to?
Issue, it's 3-13. That begins improvement plans shall be submitted to and approved by Public Works, and then goes on, improvement plans must include but are not limited to the following. And then there's a series of provisions that follow. And some of them don't seem to be part of the improvement plans. For example, under J, seems to be a requirement to developer is required to apply for all necessary approval and permits and so forth. That seems to be a standalone requirement, not a part of an improvement plan. And the same thing happens with K, L, and M.
Right.
I would agree, and I think we should just renumber them.
Yeah, I too.
Pull them out of separate conditions rather than part of the improvement plans.
Right. I agree.
Okay, on the next page, six, paragraph 3-14, subpart E, it just says, the owner applicant must submit the following to Public Works Department, covenant granting a 60-foot wide road easement for all internal commercial roads. And what's not clear to me is who is, who is the easement being granted to?
Robert, I assume that's to the county?
Robert Packenger, Public Works. The site currently has various easements. The improvements are going to require modification of the location of those easements. The lots within that development are owned by one single owner, so he can't grant himself an easement. So as he modifies the easements to different locations, a covenant will need to be recorded for the relocation of the easements to serve the different parcels on the site. Once and if any one of those lots is sold to a different entity, that easement, that covenant ripens to an actual easement. And that step has to occur because a person can't grant himself an easement.
So who is easement being granted to?
It's, it's within the properties on the site.
But don't you have to grant an easement to some, some person or some corporation or some entity?
That's why the covenant is in place. The covenant pretty much promises that when that property is sold, that easement will become a recorded easement.
So it's kind of a placeholder, in that way?
You could call it that. An easier way to imagine what that is, because you can't grant yourself an easement. And right now, those different lots are owned by the same entity. Darcy, you have the copy of the map showing all those easements?
Not in this file. I can work on it.
So maybe a better way to phrase that would be the covenant, a covenant shall be recorded, providing internal access for the 60-foot wide road easement for all internal commercial roads. I'm not sure how you would sort of, and that will, and a future easement shall be granted upon sale, or something along those lines.
The covenant is all that needs to be recorded, and once the properties are sold, that, that covenant, the easement is, is in place.
I guess we should leave this to the experts in this field.
To me, it's wording correctly. Once, what he's saying is accurate about the covenants. Those will be recorded and take precedence over whenever those properties change title to record the easements.
I think maybe the word that's throwing me and maybe Kelly up is granting, or yeah, covenant granting, you know, that is...
Covenant creating easements then? Because the lots need to have legal access. And right now, there is access according to the recorded maps. There is access shown to those lots, but with the development, the structures and parking lots, and there's, there's going to be a change to how those easements that are shown and created on the parcel map...
So would it, would it be solved by covenant creating instead of covenant granting?
Oh, yes. Covenant creating would be perfectly fine.
It seems to me that you could have a covenant agreeing to grant an easement in the future, but if, if one entity owns the whole parcel...
But each parcel is separately owned, so they could sell off individually. If they wanted to sell off one little section, they could, and at that point in time, that covenant needs to be in place to protect that easement.
So it becomes an easement at such time as that parcel's sold.
Correct. As soon as it sells to a different individual, if one of those parcels sells, then that covenant is in place to record that agreement and protect that whole center. It's a protection clause. I mean, it's, it needs, Robert is right, it needs to be in there.
Yep.
I think substituting creating for granting is more accurate.
Well, there are obviously people here who know more about this than I do.
All right, so I think...
But it just seemed odd.
So just changing the language from granting to creating, okay.
But you're actually granting it. You're not creating it, you're granting it. So, I mean, to me, the verbiage is correct. Do you want to follow up on that, Peter, and do some checking? Because you're not creating it, you're granting it as soon as you create the covenant.
I find either way whichever, whichever works and does the job.
Yeah, I understand what you're trying to do. I'm just not sure exactly the wording, how to do it.
Well, when, when it goes through the title process and that covenant is created, it's basically creating a grant to protect that easement into the future. So it, creating is not what we're doing. We're actually granting through a covenant, so.
All right.
That's correct.
So I, I think that if, if Public Works and the applicant understand the condition, which they apparently do, the language is fine, the way it is.
Me too. You've convinced me, Lisa.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
I wasn't trying to...
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Any other, Kelly?
Yeah, page nine.
Okay.
Just a typo, 8-1. The third line, water and sewer service will be, will be provided to, and the terms for the same. The word "to" should come out because it doesn't say who they're providing a to. You say the water and sewer services will be provided, and the terms for the same. And the last one is just, I tripped over it, 8-4. If food is provided to staff or the public, then plans and a permit would be required by the environmental health. Just take out the "the," and it makes it consistent with what you've done before.
All right.
That's it.
Good catches, good recommendations. So is there a motion to, or actually, I'll leave it to Darcy to guide us through the resolution process?
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission pass a motion to sign Resolution 2016-012, adopting the mitigated negative declaration and approving the planned development permit and requests for modification for 2015-048 from Mark Twain Health Care District based upon the findings contained therein.
Shall move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. And I would also say thank you for the good design and the, and the consideration of the landscaping and the shade for the parking. As one who parks always at the end of the parking lot looking for that tree, thank you so much. I'm sure all your clients and your customers will really appreciate that, and thanks for working so hard with Darcy, and Darcy for your good work too. Thank you very much.
This action is final unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors within 15 days from today's action.
Thank you. So our next item up is the discussion continued hearing on the general plan update, and our topic of discussion today is the glossary continued from May 26th. Are there any changes? Director Maurer's provided an update of all the changes since we last considered this item, so anything?
I have one.
Okay.
On page two, down at the bottom, density transfer is still there.
Right, that's what we should, we need to eliminate it.
And that should be deleted. It says, "See Transfer of Development Rights," which is kind of deleted.
Right, 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 yeah. I have that too. Anything else?
No.
Oh, I better look now that I have that one. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to talk about the glossary for the general plan?
I was going to say something. The meeting's going to be too short.
Oh, no, no, you can never have a meeting too short.
Never too short.
We're just really efficient up here, and we've all done our homework.
I just wanted to thank you for the changes. Let me see, there was, Peter, you added the density for residential description, and I thought that was, that was helpful. And what else? There was something else in there.
And then also, you know, I don't have this in the packet, but we revised, I think we talked about revising the noise element and put those noise-specific terms in there as well, so they're in both places.
Right, that was, I had to note just to confirm that that was happening, yeah.
That was the second thing I was going to thank you for, was the glossary and the noise element, so.
Good.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, is there a recommendation to, for the glossary to the Board of Supervisors or consideration?
I'll make a recommendation.
Were we taking a vote? How come I can't remember this?
I think at the end, yes, you do take a vote.
Okay, so is there a motion to pass on to approve the...
Motion to recommend the glossary be approved.
Okay.
Second.
Moving second, any further discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have our public comment period again. If there is anyone in the audience who wants to address the Planning Commission on a land you side, I'm not on the agenda.
Question. Colleen Platt. Maybe you're going to be dealing with this in your reports about the status of the community plans.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we will move on to Planning Director Reports.
Okay.
Nice segue.
Thank you. I have been working with a number of the district two communities, as well as people from San Andreas, to work on those and get those to you. We're close in many cases. We had talked last time about holding a special meeting on June 30th to begin that discussion. I think we talked about that, at least that was my intent, to schedule a meeting then. Realized that that is the deadline date for submittal of cannabis cultivation registrations, applications. If things continue the way they are, I don't want to take anyone away from our office that day. So I'm suggesting that instead we bump that a week and hold a special meeting the first Thursday of July. And just with scheduling and stuff, and I've been communicating with various members of the communities for review of the drafts. And that gives me a little bit more time to work with them and iron out any issues. So if we could schedule a special meeting for July, I believe it's the seventh. And that's grimacing.
My calendar's not in my brain right now. It's the first Thursday of July.
Yeah, because the fourth is Monday.
So no meeting on the 30th?
No meeting on the 30th.
So we get an extended vacation?
Yes.
As well as you, thank you.
Yes. I'll be back on the...
No, you'll be back.
I'll be back on the 27th. We have a board meeting the 28th, and then the flood of applications will continue, I'm sure, while I'm gone, so...
That's fine with me.
And I think that gives time, and we should have most of those wrapped up, and I'll just present as many as we can, and hopefully they'll go fairly smoothly. I think that we've worked out, for the most part, the issues between the community plan interest groups and, you know, the current, you know, the draft general plan that we've developed so far, so that's one of the issues that we had some concern about was consistency. So I think we'll have a chance to work out some of those issues and present you with the start of the community plan. So we'll get through as many as we can, I may still be working on a couple of the communities at that time, but I think for the most part, they should be worked out by then. If we can get through all of them one day, that would be wonderful, if we need to carry that over to the next regular meeting, which would be the 14th of July, we can hopefully wrap that up then. And then following that, we then begin to review the land use map and any changes that are proposed. I know I'll be recommending some changes, there'll be a number of individuals that will be requesting the map be changed. That's probably gonna be a fairly lengthy process to go through all that. And I'll be working on a report that identifies all the requested changes, as well as identifying those that I think would be beneficial to the overall ten of the plan.
Now, do all of the proposals for map changes have to come before the commission? Assuming that they don't make an agreement with the planning department?
Well, this will be the opportunity to make any changes to the draft plan. And I'm sure there will be, you know, there were a number of specific requests. There have been some, as I've discussed, with community groups, gee, these make some sense, you know, just looking at development patterns and circulation and all the various issues that we look at with the land use map. So ultimately, you know, anyone in the public will have the ability to address the commission, suggest changes. We'll probably end up going through a fairly long list of, you know, specific parcels. This should be, you know, whatever land use designation that they think, and then we'll have to sort of debate that.
So with the community plans, are you gonna be providing a list of all of the landowners that asked for those land use changes? Since the maps will be considered at that point for the community plans, right? So are you gonna go through that process and sort of why you went with some and not others? I mean, because that's where the land use map will be.
There are some. You know, I didn't really go and look at the complete list of all the requests and see if there were any changes within those specific community regions. We will be looking at the maps for the community areas with the review of that, because that's, you know, sort of the key component of those community plans.
But at those hearing with the community plans, that's where the people in those communities are gonna wanna know.
There will be an opportunity for, to do that. I was thinking more that that, we'd look at that more specifically with the land use map. But I'll go through, I'll try to go through that list of requests and see if there's any in there that might contradict or conflict with the recommendations on the community plans. I think for the most part, those were looked at more in the whole community perspective, even though there were individuals within that, and I think we've addressed those for the most part.
Well, I just know, there are a number of people I'm just thinking about now in McCollum Hill that I know they filled out the yellow sheet.
Yeah.
They filled out the yellow sheet, if we're talking about the community plan and we're showing the map, seems to me that they're not gonna wait to talk about the general plan and as a whole. They're gonna come and talk about their particular parcel when that community plan is heard.
Yeah.
So this may be a good reason to have a little more time, because I think at least that, you know, we should be prepared to respond to those, not defer it down the road, saying, no, no, you should look at it later.
I think you're absolutely right, I think if we look at the community plans, we should consider any changes in the land use map.
From those yellow sheets, or whatever, you know, when people weighed in and said, I want this, be prepared, yeah, okay.
I know that many people in my district are gonna be coming up forward about PD, to discuss PD, so heads up on that one.
Okay.
I've gotten a ton of emails, and I keep getting asked, when is it gonna be heard? So I know that's coming, just mentally be ready.
Alright.
Well, outside the community plan areas, with, if a landowner has a request in for a map change, how is it going to be handled in terms of bringing it before the commission and notifying the landowner when his issue's coming up? How is this gonna work?
My intent is to develop essentially a spreadsheet that shows, you know, all of the requests, pretty much just in numerical order by APN. And we'll notify all of those people of the beginning of the hearing date, but I can't guarantee what day it's gonna be heard. Because I just don't know how long it's gonna take to go through how many of them. You know, if they're at the, near the bottom of the list, because their number starts with, you know, ninety rather than four, they probably don't need to show up on the first day. But it will be, they'll just have to sort of track it and see how things are going. I, at least that's my, you know, otherwise, we could just, you know, anyone who shows up that first day and they'll say, I wanna talk about this parcel. I don't know what would be the most effective way to do that. I haven't quite got there to figure that one out.
I had one come in yesterday that said that he doesn't see his in the public comments, he looked online. And he wanted me to make sure that I was aware of that when he's coming up, and I'm gonna send you an email on that one, because I know you've dealt with him quite a bit in the past.
So, you know, as I think about it now, it may be, I'll just have the spreadsheet in numerical order. We'll just announce it, we'll start discussing it, because there may be some people that, you know, they've either said, oh, it's not that big of a deal, or, and some of them have looked at it, that makes sense, that's a good change. And so that will be included, there will be another version of the land use map that will be presented. And I will identify from that list of requesters which ones were included in the new draft and which ones weren't.
Great.
And so that will narrow the focus down somewhat. There will also be some changes that may or may not have been specifically requested, but, you know, after more review, more input, you know, it makes some sense to make some changes, so...
I mean, it would be good to try to come up with a way so that people have a fair idea when their request is gonna come before the commission rather than having to show up at every commission hearing.
Maybe we can do it by supervisory district or something like that.
Do it by batches perhaps.
Yeah.
Pick an area, try to figure out what we can cover in a day and notify those people. And if we finish early, we finish early, but I think people ought to have the right to come before the commission and without wasting a lot of time doing it.
Right, right.
And I have one other question on community plans, and it is, these are the community plans, it's not... For example, if it's in San Andreas, it seems to me that me as a planning commissioner doesn't have a lot to say about that.
Right.
And if it's consistent with the draft general plan, I don't know that there's a whole lot that this commission needs to be doing with those, is there?
Well, I think if the public wanted to come forward and speak regarding it, then that would be their opportunity. But I'm like him, I'm going, wow, community plans, I don't feel that I would be stepping into someone else's area.
But you have the responsibility as the advisory agency, and this is part of the general plan, to make a recommendation on it. And if your recommendation is, hey, if the community agrees with this, then I'm all for it.
Okay.
And, but also to look at consistency with the rest of the general plan, internal consistency, those kinds of issues. So if the community were proposing policies that conflicted with other policies that we've included in the general plan, then that's something that we have to consider.
Well, and there's also just from the standpoint of not everybody in the community is probably gonna agree on everything in their community plan. So it's also, you know, from a broader perspective, the commission weighing in on that and making recommendations either on specific, you know, if people have specific land use items from, you know, a distance as far as what makes sense and knowledge of the general plan and the direction that the general plan is taking, as I think there's a lot of value. Not that you're saying what the community should or shouldn't do, but not everybody's going to agree, so I think there's gonna be some, a need for some consideration and decision-making and recommendations through the board.
Will, will you or somebody in your staff, with your staff, be taking a look at these to see if there are inconsistencies with the draft general plan?
Yes, yes, I've done that.
And I don't think you're gonna propose a community plan that would be inconsistent, so the ones that he brings forward for review will already have been vetted as far as consistency with the policies in the general plan. Any other discussion?
So we are, our next meeting will then be the first Thursday in July.
And with that, we're adjourned, thank you very much. Thank you.